Wait a minute, let me turn my phone off so it don't ring. There we are. And we are now live. Okay, we're recording. Good morning, good morning, good morning, College Park. What's your tea? What's your tea? What is your tea? And for those of you who may not know who I am, and for the sake of those who may be new coming in here, my name is Demetrius Taylor. I am known as Big Meach, and this parts of the world. And um, you're right here on my podcast here. This here is uh, everything College Park, Georgia page on Facebook. And uh, you may know me from the uh, College Park Car Chronicles. But I also run my own radio show, uh, Dishing Tea with Big Meach. And I also just launched my own radio station, W T E A Radio. I am a former mayor or candidate. And I'm also former vice chair for the Business and Industrial Development Authority Board for the city of College Park. And that's just for the benefit of those who who don't know me, okay? Uh, before we get started, I'm going to address something right here and right now. And you're not going to like this because usually this should not be the platform for it. But I'm gonna tell you, I do not like being called out um, in a way that that suggests um, uh, foulness in a way that suggests crassness, and in a way that suggests that you gonna run up on me. Let me call you out, Mr. Gary Sussi, okay? It was a pleasure to meet you face to face when you showed up late at the end of the last uh, College Park Citizens Association meeting. When you walked your ass up in there and wanted to have this big old Chester Cat smile on your face because you met me in person. Now, your energy then was very nice. I was like, okay, I think I can fuck with him, okay? And yes, we have a difference of opinion, okay, concerning this, but that's fine because that's what makes us human and that's what makes the world go round. But motherfucker, you got one more goddamn time to call me a bitch ass anything. You got one more motherfucking time, motherfucker, to come for me the way that you did in those comments over there up under uh, the College Park uh, council. You got one more motherfucking time. And you gonna see a whole different side of me. I don't play bitch ass games like that. I'm nobody bitch ass. Just like I, and you gonna call me, oh, you're just uh, Councilwoman Jamelle McKenzie's bitch. Now, you didn't write that out. You sit up there and put initials and carrying on, C W J M B. Okay, for those of y'all who want to go check the record before he erased the shit, go look at the comments, okay? And so my response to him when he said that, I laughed it off. I said, well, if I'm her bitch, then you the mayor's asshole. Cause I put A H, okay? Now, you gonna sit down here and go through all this because I I had uh, responded to Elizabeth Lester. And then you gonna sit there and say some fuck shit, telling myself, oh, we just gonna wait for your B A bitch ass to get your talking point from J M. Okay, you got one more motherfucking time, bitch. One more motherfucking time, bitch, to fuck with me. You hear me? I'm not the one you want like that, motherfucker. I'm not the one. I don't play these fuck ass games. And you keep your mouth to yourself like that. And we can have a difference of opinion. We can have a difference of fucking opinion, and we can sit up there and talk about the issues at hand. But you play some Trump shit like that, yeah, you fucking with the right one. You fucking with the right one. I don't play shit like that. And you don't know me just like I don't know you, but that shit, you would get to know me very motherfucking well. You hear me? Now, you could tee tee, laugh it off, and sit up there and say, oh, oh, no, I didn't mean, oh, hi, I don't give a fuck about none of that. I'm well over my motherfucking fifties. I'm fifty-four years old. We too old for fuck shit like that, nigga. Yeah, I said it, nigga. We too old for shit like that. You hear me? And you keep fucking with me, and you gonna see a whole different side of me because I'm gonna play this motherfucking shit. Listen, I say what the fuck I say, and I stand ten toes down, waist deep in it, and I can back up everything I say, but bitch, you coming for me with some fuck shit. I don't appreciate that. I don't appreciate that at all. And I I don't give a fuck who go tell him. Y'all better send him this motherfucking video. Y'all better call his ass, tell him to watch it so he can hear it from me. All of you bitches who follow him and wanna kiss his ass and all that, think he the coolest thing to slice bread, y'all better tell him, don't fuck with me. Like that. Cause I'm not the one, or the two, the three, or the motherfucking four. Hear? You better tell him. Y'all better tell him. I don't fuck with nobody like that, and I don't like being called out like that, especially when you wanna sit up there and do the cryptic ass messages and shit. I don't do that. I don't do that. And anything I can say, I can say to your motherfucking face, and trust truly. I got you. So walk up on me again, wanna shake my hand and act like you wanna be friendly. Yeah, we can have this conversation. God damn it. I don't play shit like that. Yeah, we gonna wait for your bitch ass to get your message from from J Mackenzie. Fuck you and the damn shit that you stand on. Hear? So now that we have that out the way, because I wanted to put that out there first, okay, and set the tone in this motherfucker. Now, let's talk about this council meeting, okay? Um, I'm not sure if you guys got an opportunity to see Councilwoman McKenzie's uh, recap video that she made. She posted it here on um, the Everything College Park page. And uh, I ended up reposting it as well. I didn't know she had posted it, so I ended up reposting it. I was gonna take it down, but I said, no, I'm gonna delete them both out there. Um, you guys can can get uh, that as she referenced me in there. And that's because if you go look at the comments, there was, there's a part in there when when they got to go and do they do this damn shit that they like to go through. I immediately said, okay, what the hell is going on now? What done happened, right? Because whenever I'm watching from the uh, the the thing, I'm from, I'm at work, so I got up. And when I come back to the video, um, I had missed something. So I'm like, okay, what did I miss? What is going on? Cause we had this little chaotic moment, okay? Then we went into this whole thing of this, this, this thing about, oh, well, I don't know about this. I don't know about this. Why are we doing this and why are we doing that? And the mayor said that they're telling everybody to go get open records and and she telling everybody to go request open records because we're down, we're now down to the uh, the top three finalists or whatever. And because we're down to the top three finalists, you guys could go to open records and you can see who they are and blah, 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 blah. And she insinuated something, you know, my opinion, of course. No, it ain't my own fucking opinion. She insinuated it. By telling everybody to go to uh, get the open records request and this, that, and the others, and and again. Wait a minute, I ain't gonna go there just yet. Um, but here's where the problem is. And I have not heard nobody call her out for being wrong, okay? When she adjourned that meeting without giving Councilwoman Arnold the opportunity to come back. That was wrong. Now, I want all of you uh, Motley Broome supporters to make sure you call her ass out on that. Okay, this is what I keep talking about. Y'all wanna blast the council when they wrong, and and we should when they're wrong. But every time it comes down to her and her mishaps, you do not call her out for her shit. She tried to, no, she ended that meeting trying to say it was adjourned. And Councilwoman Arnold clearly said, I'm not walking out on this meeting. I'm going to the restroom. I will be right back. The mayor, Mrs. Motley Broome, decided that since there was no quorum, she didn't wanna sit down there to entertain anything. There was an opportunity time to talk while while we waiting on Tracy Arnold to come back. And this, that, and the other. McKenzie and Khan got up and came right back. And this, that, and the other. You know, trying to, whatever they would, whatever they had to do, we were waiting for Arnold to come back. Y'all already know that at the end of the Ward Four meeting, I mean, the Ward Four report. Whenever Gay, Councilman Gay, makes the motion to go into executive session, he always gets up and walks across the dais to the other side. We've become, and he does that all the damn time. And if it's not walking across the other side, he walks out to go to his office. Well, I've I've always thought that when he walk out to cross, that at the, at the end, that he goes to the bathroom because the bathroom was on that side of the the auditorium or whatever. Uh, but then again, he could just be leaving to go over to to the conference hall to get ready for executive session because I feel it's rude, you know, you just get out, ain't nobody, okay, you made the motion, yeah, so hell, we still got to wait for the vote. That's kind of rude to just get up and walk the fuck away, you know? Uh, but we know he does that, right? So then he left. Then we got this chaotic little thing going on for a minute. Uh, whatever this thing are trying to go into, I'm trying to go into executive session. Whatever that was about trying to handle something they were handling, I got to go back over that because that confused the hell out of me. Cause I came up, I came up on something, I'm like, okay, this is chaotic. What the fuck is this? So now you have the mayor sit up there as she calls herself adjourned the meeting. And McKenzie sat there and said, uh, Arnold is on her way back. She's 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 gotta come back. Okay, she's coming back. But we still don't have a quorum. She said Arnold is coming back. Okay, she says she went to the restroom. Then Gay and uh, Khan and Mayor got into this little shit that they always get into. And then the mayor decides that she's just going to adjourn the meeting. She kissed the gavel, gets up, puts on her backpack. And then, and everybody's like, wait a minute, no, we can't do that because we waiting for for Arnold to come back from the bathroom. Why are y'all not blasting her ass to say you was wrong for that? Even if you don't do it as publicly as you would like to do to council, how many of y'all have called her, emailed her, Karen, and all that, missing you was wrong for that? That was wrong, out of order. That was out of order. Out of fucking order. Okay, so now, they got Roger to come back in. So now that he's back in, he as mayor pro temp had to now navigate the rest of the meeting to go into executive session so they could take them, take the thing to go into executive session. That was out of order. That was completely and totally out of order, okay? Now, what made me call Councilwoman McKenzie was because these optics are still not looking right, okay? The optics wasn't right. So we like, okay, wait a minute, what is, what are we talking about? That two people, a councilwoman and the mayor, are claiming that they did not get any information about what's going on with this, with these interviews or whatever, right? Now, when I called her, I told her, I said, no, you go and explain this to the people. She said, I was about to do a video. I'm glad you called me. I said, well, it's not sitting well because this here doesn't look good. Okay, because now folks are thinking that y'all doing something underhanded yet again, and we need to find out what's going on, okay? So she said, well, there's a lot behind that uh, that a lot of folks don't know. She said, we were found, we were told about this at five o'clock, that the the uh, the 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 company that they're using to hire, you know, and do the processing for all of this, they had scheduled a Zoom interview because the council could not agree when they could sit down together. Everybody had, they had a conflict in time and this, that, and the other. She said, we could not agree to what day would be best to sit down. So they're supposedly bringing these folks in on Saturday. And they felt that it would be best to have a Zoom conference first so that they could learn them, see their faces and this, that, and the other. As she explains all this in her video. Then, when she told me about, uh, she reiterated about them about to bring these people in. So now, we're about to spend money on candidates. Candidates to come in with their families. For, what she said, three days and two nights, okay? Uh, to come to the city, which means that all that expenses are enough. We gotta get them here. We're gonna put them up in the lodging. I'm sure we're gonna have them either, if if we're not giving them transportation, they're gonna rent cars so they can travel around and this, and the other, unless somebody was gonna be on babysit duty. And we taking them here, taking them there, showing them what the city is and da, 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 de. Outlineing the wards and all of that so they can see what what the city is. That's money. Where is that budgeted? Is that in the, but I don't even know if that's in the budget. That's something I need to ask all of them. Is that budgeted for that? Okay, does that come out of the discretionary fund? Now, as much as everybody hollering about this, y'all hollering about these damn programs, I'm gonna get on that in a minute. Y'all always hollering about, y'all want transparency and carrying on, but yet here we are not knowing that they finna bring these fuckers in here, paying it on the city. That ain't nobody questioned that. But y'all wanna get on the fact that they having these damn interviews and the assumption and the seed that I heard being planted by the mayor, telling myself, get the open records, is that she planted that they're gonna have these interviews to make a decision tonight. That's what was going on. And that's clear, and uh, Elizabeth Lester put that in the comment. She was like, oh, my God, what is this? How come y'all, were y'all trying to rush this through? And it's like, no, there's got to be something more to this. I'm not believing that this is what this is, okay? Now, let me say this. And um, McKenzie told me, she said, we all got the same email. And she showed me the calendar, you know, the calendar alert and carrying on, because that's public record. And I said, oh, and it's stamped at five thirty-five. So they got that just before they went into anybody's meeting and before they went into workshop and all this, that, and the other. So for them to say that they didn't know about it, that means either y'all didn't check your emails or y'all ignored the emails. Because everything else is there. Now, I'm gonna leave that there, okay? I'm gonna leave that there. Because what has been established has been folks have not been doing their emails. Okay, and that's been in the meetings. We've been seeing them. Either I didn't get it or I didn't see it. Um, oh, I was, I was unaware of all that, and we've had this back and forth with them about emails. No, you responded to this, but you responded to this. And so it becomes this back and forth, and it's like, okay, wait a minute, what's going on with these goddamn emails? Either you're not checking them, or your assistant, whoever supposed to be doing it for you, is not getting the information to you. Okay, so we have a breach right there. So the communications are going out. And it's just like the citizens are saying, I emailed you, but you're not responding back to me, blah, 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 blah. This is the same thing here. Okay, this is the exact same thing here. And so now, when we get here at the, on the dais, and they get to back and forth and the carrying on, we've already established that we have people who are not checking their emails. Or at least not checking them in a timely fashion, okay? To say that, and I I refuse to believe when they said that. When both of them said that that they know nothing about it, I said, uh-uh, there's something more to this. I'm not believing that. I'm not believing that both of them don't know. That's not, that that doesn't make sense. That's not making sense, okay? And so, yes, so now, we have this information coming out that they were trying to, they were supposed to be, and they still may just do that. The whole idea of them having the Zoom was to put a face to the people and then to see where this is going, because they still may end up bringing them in here Saturday. That decision, that's the decision that had to be made, if they're going to bring those finalists in. Or if they have to start from scratch and get new people, okay? So whatever that is, okay, well, that's the decision that they have to make, okay? So everybody jumping on this, and it's easy to do. It is so easy to do. And I'm not going to say that our city council has not made that an easy plight, okay? They have made that very easy for suspicion, and they have made it very easy for the uh, the uh, assumption of nefarious acts because of shit like this, okay? Everybody wants to be transparent. Elizabeth Lester and I keep going back and forth through this, and I keep saying this. What y'all say is transparency. Y'all want the shit that they talk about in executive session. And y'all can't tell me no otherwise. Y'all keep saying, oh, but they, uh, Jason got up there talking about the um, um, uh, consensus uh, agenda, the consent agenda. Jason, they do the consent agenda, darling, and listen, when they put that together, it's already done. That stuff is already, they've already vetted and carrying on. Now, Jamelle puts in her video that most of the stuff that's on there is stuff that's already in the budget. They've had those items budgeted. We watched them do that when they first did it, at what was it, the June seventeenth meeting? Where they tried to have the consent agenda and they took all these different letters because that stuff was already budgeted. And it was, they already said yes to the budget. Now that the people are coming to say, this is how we gonna spend the money. We need this, we need this, we need this, we need this. Well, that's in the budget. They've already budgeted that. So those items go onto a consent agenda because they already know they're gonna say yes to that. It's already budgeted. So we put all that there because that 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 there doesn't need to have a discussion. Everything else that need to be discussed, if they got a question. I'm not clear on this. I'm not clear on that. Then that's why it comes off the consent agenda. We had the city man, the city attorney explain that to us. It cannot be a consent agenda if you got a damn question about it. That means you don't consent. You have questions. So that means we got to vet the questions before, and you know, so you could get your clarity before we can vote on it. What problem do you have with that? Uh, uh, what was that, Elizabeth and somebody else? I forget who uh, wanted to say. Well, they're just passing stuff and it doesn't, and 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 they're not discussing and giving us an opportunity to hear. You, some of that shit, we don't need to hear. How about that? Some of it, we don't need to hear because it's city business. Some of that don't need to be heard. A lot of y'all have gotten gotten this thing twisted. Like we, if if you need to know that motherfucking much, go work for the city. Y'all know we got all these goddamn openings up in there. Go work. Fill out an application to go, go get on the inside. How about that? Uh, if you feel that you got to have all of this kind of information that is outside of what they give us, outside of what you could get out of, out of the open records request because your your families were going to file a damn open records request. Everything is there. Everything is there. Now, what has been happening, which I love to do, is y'all take a piece of shit, okay? Or y'all wanna twist it, okay? She says she ain't never heard nothing about it. Well, the email here, she was E C C'd on the email, so she knew, she knew about what? She didn't know about the twenty million dollar thing. I mean, y'all the one who just said, well, it was never presented. So if it was never presented, how in the hell did council not, did they know about it? Y'all would wanna tell me that. Oh, it never got that far because Michelle Alexander, she was fired, so it never got to council. So if it never got to council, how in the fuck did they know about it? They knew of it. They heard the people there that were talking about it in the meeting. They knew about what 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 an idea. They didn't have the specifics. And y'all take shit like that, and y'all run and twist it, and then y'all done made a whole diatribe of it. Y'all done made a whole, a whole narrative of it for what? To cause dissension because you don't like the fact that she's there. That's what it all boils down to. It goes back to that. And here, ah, here we go, and yes, it is. It goes right back to that. It goes right back to that. So what do we want, people? What do we want? Uh? What do we want? And I'm, I'm gonna make that challenge. Everybody who keeps saying, oh, we need transparency. I go fill out an application to go work for the city. Those of you who feel that they're not doing the job properly, run in the elections, huh? Become somebody's assistant over there, honey. They got tons of openings. Volunteer, how about that? Go volunteer. Go volunteer at City Hall. Find out what you could get in and fit in so that you could get inside track, huh? Go see the inner workings of all of this so you can find out exactly what's going on. We got a number of boards and carrying on that require the citizen input. Ricks and Rex and um, uh, a parking Rex. And entertainment, honey, Michelle Johnson, okay? And Lance, well, Lance is over there because Michelle's been gone. So Lance, oh, honey, they need the committees. Go over there and help Brian out. They meet, what, once a month and carrying on? Y'all could, y'all could get on the committees and find out what's, and how how this shit work. But do you do it? Very interesting, huh? Very, very, very interesting. So I challenge that. I challenge everybody who say that, who say, who keeps saying transparency, accountability, responsibility. I challenge all of you. Go get a job in the city. Take your expertise and go work. That way you can have an inside track of what you think you gonna get. Hmm? Go ahead. That will solve all the problems. That could get you on the inside. That could get you all the answers that you need. You could get it firsthand without without getting a second and third hand or whatever, without speculating. Okay, it can give you all of that, okay? It can give you all of that, darling. Yes, how about it? Okay, how about it? It could give you all of that. So now what are we gonna do? Let's move on, okay? Because I am very pleased up until that that little snafu that we had with everybody. Okay, we had a relatively decent council meeting this year. I mean, this this particular um, session. Okay, wonderful, okay, considering what we've been having, right? We even got, we, hell, I feel, I feel vindicated a little bit, honey. They 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 even got to email comments, okay? I I had resubmitted the one that they read, honey. I I sent that in, what, meetings ago? Okay, but I I've re-sent it because I didn't have time to to put, to type what I wanted to type. I had forgotten. Uh, I I usually do it the day of. I don't like to send them in so so far ahead of time. Because it'd be stuff that comes up that I want to, that I want to say and write then. So I usually do it the day of. And so again, because I was at work, I got toe around with my time, and so I wasn't able to, again, I was like, I sent that girl in like at about six fifty-three. And you know, the seven o'clock is the cutoff point, so I didn't have time to type what I wanted to type because I need for them to look at these lights. Have y'all been down uh, Riverdale Road? Right here between um, what is that? What is that? What's the name of that little street? It's the airport, it's going into the airport. I can't think of the name of the street, but from, between there, between the airport and Herschel Road. It's dark as hell. It's dark as hell up in there, dark! And then of course, T. Owen Smith, is, is, there's no lights there anymore right now. And then part of Best Road is out, right there, at the intersection of Best Road and T. Owen. All of that is entirely too dark, it's dark, it's black, okay, unless you got your headlights on, honey, you can't see. So, uh, I was going to put that in, so that we can see, uh, what's going on with those lights, because if I remember before, that part of the lighting is us. It's not the state, I think that part is us, so I was gonna talk about that. Also down West Point, West Point, uh, before it turned into Lee Street. Right there at, at West Point and, um, uh, Best Road. All of that needs to be repaved and we need that yellow line down the street, because folks are driving too close together. And, and we need, we need that divider line, so that folks don't know what they're doing. Uh, so that was some of the things I was gonna say, and I'm, I'm gonna put that into, uh, in another letter and carrying on, so. That there is that. Um, if y'all saw the Car Chronicles about Hattie Marie's, we are losing businesses. Hattie Marie's and the Bodega are gone. Child, I thought Hattie Marie's was just called, baby, I went by there yesterday, honey, they have moved. The building is just standing there, there's no seats, there's no nothing up in there, child, they move it. One side of the window, I don't know if they were broken or busted, honey, cause they got wooped up on the windows, on one side of the door, on, on, closest to. Um, uh, Harvard Street, they got, they got windows up. On the doggone, uh, thing, on the, on the, on the, I mean, boards up on the windows. So I don't know what's going on with that, we just know that Hattie Marie's is gone, okay? Uh, so now what, what are we, what are we doing, I, I, I asked a question. What do we want our downtown to look like, what do we want our businesses to look like, you know, we need a variety of businesses. There's only so many ways you could cook a chicken, honey. Okay, the barbecue place being there was lovely because it gave us an option, you know, um. May, do we want another barbecue spot up in there, what do we want, you know, let's talk, okay, and that, that there. Uh, for everyone who is looking to get involved, now is the time, child. Send in the things to the city manager and over there to buy the, y'all, y'all could get to Tracy Wyatt. Send that over there to the body president, but listen, this is what we need, this is what I would like to see down here. Just throw our ideas, so that they could get a, a, a point of, of, of what the city wants. What is it that you would like to see? Do we need more vegan options, do we need vegetarian options or whatever, that's full restaurants, you know, for those of us. Who are, you know, um, are living a different, um, um, uh, kinda live and eat it lifestyle or whatever, your eating plan is different. So what is it that we need, okay? This is the opportunity for you guys to, well, not you guys, but all of us, to get involved in that way, okay? Uh, let's go to last night. And the Carly Red Day, okay? Now, I got to be very careful here. Because I am seething with anger. Because it wasn't the event, the event was a wonderful event, Carly got there late as hell though. This thing was, was supposed to go from four. To six, I think it was, child, that girl didn't get there to six thirty. And what ended up happening is because she is on the reality show Love and Hip Hop Atlanta. Um. They, her people decided that this was going to be filmed for the show. Okay, so. Yeah, so they've, you know, it took, and by the time she got there, you know, they made this a rare carpet event, which was fun. Um, and so now, you know, we waiting on her to get out the car, so that they can tape her and, and record her coming in, and recorded her with the this, this, this. You know, they upstairs with cameras everywhere recording her, you know, uh, speech and this, that and the other, and all of that, and then of course. After it was all said and done, now we got to record her leaving, okay? So it became a production, right? And it was a wonderful event, okay, she's donated, uh, uh, the computers. And she said they donated cameras and things of that nature, uh, for this STEM program. That is going to be opening soon, okay, I'm, I don't remember the start dates. Uh, that it was going to take place, Dr. Letha, um, just have to give me those start dates, cause I, I missed what she said. We do know it's going to be Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, uh, what she say, from three to six, I believe she said it was. So, um, she's donated the time, I mean, the, the technology. She's donated, uh, and has, and, uh, donated funds, so that the prob- the program can get up and running and carrying on. So, um, this is a good, good, this is a win, this is a win-win, right? A win-win. And I'm like, okay, okay, but it was something that came after that. And I got to be careful with this. It was something that came after that, and I'm, I can't go into it because I can't go into it. I'm trying to talk around it, okay? I'm just going, I'm gonna put it like this, I told y'all the other day, that. Everything about this fucking recall, and the tactics that are being used, has been. Declared war, okay? I told y'all that when we were talking about the, 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 uh, pizza and ice cream shit, okay? And y'all come over to wanna record the kids on the parking, on, on the playground and shit, or whatever, on the, you know. And this, that and the, so that you could have footage. Someone asked, I saw the comments, uh, I think it was Brad or somebody, well, where is the footage, who gives a fuck where the footage is, Brad? Because it was your people that did it, so you ask them, ask them. Because y'all heard the girl say, they were videotaping us, so the question becomes, who was doing the videotaping? If y'all would've wants to offer the damn pizza and the ice cream, then that means y'all want somebody over there was taping, so go ask them where the footage is. Okay, go ask them. But I told you in that video, and that was a Car Chronicle. That we have declared, y'all, who, all of y'all who, who are real set on this damn recall. Y'all have declared war because y'all have gotten into tactics that have just, have become. Insidiously deceitful. Okay, just deceitful. Deceitful, deceitful, deceitful. And there was a tactic that was pulled last night. That just explains how deceitful. And just how cutthroat that this shit is, is trying to become. When it had no business going there. It had no business going there at all, at all. And instead of the phone call being. What a wonderful thing this is. The phone call became something else, okay? And now folks are scrambling because of the trust issue. Okay, the phone call that was made, yeah, the trust is gonna be to the, to the caller. And not to the event planner, or whatever, okay? And I know, I know I'm cryptic, okay, I know I'm cryptic, but, um, that's fucked up. It's fucked up, okay? And it just goes to show that the tactics that are being used, honey, it's an all-out war. This has become war, and it's so unnecessarily, because all it takes is for y'all to sit y'all black asses down at the table. Sit your ass down and talk, and don't give me this bullshit, oh, I can't talk, I can't talk, I can't talk, and then. No, you don't want them to listen, you don't want them to hear you, because you in your fucking feelings. That's what this is, you in your feelings. Okay? And, and then, well, let me go back to the meeting, because it was something that was said, that I, I, I commented on this in the, in the comments, okay? When Mr. Mario Malcolm came up and, and accepted the proclamation. For Mr. uh, Mr. Grandville, on behalf of Brian Grandville. Okay, and he was talking about, you know, his, the new event that's coming up, they're doing the movie thing, and all of that. He did came back, came back as a citizen. On public comments. And he said he had to clear something up, because he's being told. And he's, and his words were by some of the members of the, the United College Park, okay? Now, he said some of the members, he didn't say the whole organization and this, that and the other, and someone got offended by that one, no, the organization, I say, he didn't say the organization, he said some of the members of it. Okay? He said that he's been accused and has been accosted. By saying that he's accepting bribes, and he didn't use that word, but basically, he's in partnership with Councilwoman McKenzie. And being paid off. To have all of these partnerships or whatever, I said, how in the fuck does that make sense? How is the donor, who stood up there and came into a partnership and put up all of the money? To do the program? The city ain't paying no money, that didn't come out no, no discretionary fund, it didn't come out of the general fund, it didn't come out of the, the, uh, hotel tax. It didn't come out the, the, the entertainment, it didn't come, nothing to do with the city. This is a private business, who said, I want to make a donation to a cause and donated all of that. To the city to make this program go. And y'all accuse this man, this business owner. A business owner. Um, taking in or, or, or being bought off. So basically you're saying, he was bought off and the money that he used to fund. The backpack giveaway, the back-to-school bags, was really city money, that's what y'all trying to say? Because you're trying to put some illegality on this, so that y'all can keep up with y'all narrative with the recall, is that what you're trying to say? What sense does that make? And if that's the case, if we're going to look at that approach, are we going to scrutinize every business that come in to partner with the, with, uh, College Park? Cause then that means that you're gonna go look at the Kids Fest that Joe Khan put on, and go look at his partnerships, right? And say, oh, he paid them off, huh? You're gonna look at that, and, 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 and X, Y, Z that, like that? Are you gonna look at the, um, the upcoming Board Four Festival? Are y'all gonna look at all his partnerships to see what, see what that money is? Because you already said that, that Councilman Gay has already paid off by next, next era. Okay, since they donated to the campaign, to, uh, Pam's campaign. And this, that and the other, so are y'all gonna go through and scrutinize all of that as well, to say, oh, that they being bought off? How, and they donated the money, so basically, so, so the donation is, y'all saying. That city council is nefariously and illegally using city money. And, 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 and funneling it through, through these big corporate organizations as a bribe. As, as to say, okay, we're part, partner with us, and do, do, I did it, is that what we're doing? That makes no sense, how do we win? Huh? These events have been win-win situations, child, we got the community involved, we got the community out there active again. Active, huh? And y'all talking about, I've seen the snap, wait a minute, let me pull this up, uh-uh, uh-uh. Uh-uh, wait a minute. Cause when I saw this, I gagged, I gagged, I just really, I, 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 I gagged. Because, uh. Wait, what, did it come here? Olivia, where, where did you send that to me, cause your show sent it, oh, I know where you sent it, you sent it here. Um, wait a minute. Cause, uh-uh, I'm like, uh-uh, you, you've got to be kidding, right, we, we, we're not here, we cannot be here. We cannot be here, I refuse to believe that we are here, okay? I just refuse to believe it, here it is. Um, and this here, somebody sent me a screenshot. Um. I don't know what their first comment was, cause it's cut in half, but Sherri Godfrey. Oh, I, oh, she was responding to Shakita James, okay? Uh. Uh, and I believe that Shakita. Looking at part of this was probably, um, talking about the video I had done, and looking at some of the wording up in here, I'm assuming, okay? Cause I can't read it all, it's, it's in pieces, and then it says Seymour, and I can't click on it. But Sh- uh, Sherri Godfrey responded by saying, uh, Shakita James, amen. Completely agree, I wish residents would focus more on how council is serving their long-term interests and needs. Rather than the fleeting festivals, free food and haircuts. Okay, and haircuts. And my question becomes, what are they not focusing on, Ms. Godfrey? Okay? Everything has happened simultaneously, so we trying to get community involvement, as well as trying to build trust in the council. As well as take care of all this other business, so what is not, uh, being focused on, I'm, I'm gonna use your wording. Um. More focus, I wish the residents would focus more on how council is serving their long-term interests and needs. Well, let's talk about interests and needs. Because a lot of these programs are, are geared towards those who are underserved. Who may not be in touch with what's going on in the community. And so we got, we got our council people sent up there saying, this is a part of our community too. You understand? Some of them may not even be in the voting block, some of them may, may vote and don't vote or whatever, and they got to build the trust. So when we talk about long-term interests and goals, right now, their long-term, honey, is making sure that my children are back to school and I need help. Their long-term is about the Housing Authority, how can I get the Housing Authority to be X, Y and Z? The long-term focus is, if you want me to trust you, how can I trust you, when every time I turn around, we've been giving promises? And nothing in return. What does that mean, and what is it supposed to look like, huh? You wish the residents would focus more, okay? Except for the festivals and this, that and the other, and yet, if we didn't have the city doing anything, we would have a problem. Okay, I still go back to this time last year, well, uh, June of last year. Where we had Mrs. Bu- Mrs. Bula Lindsay come up there and bless out the council. Because in an African-American city, predominantly African-American, eighty-six percent African-American, we did nothing for Juneteenth. This, uh, to further, where the city recognized it, okay? And then with all of these things that we've been having up in here, we've been having the businesses come through. The businesses have been the ones that, that've been supporting most of this stuff, it's very little has been coming out of the city budget, and even though. We got people who, the, 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 the council people have put the budget in for, they got a hundred thousand dollars or whatever in their discretionary budget. For community initiatives, and none of them, but I, I don't think the Kids Fest had any of his money come out. Okay, the, um, the, the War Four, and this stuff is annual, and see, that's the other thing. Hot damn, wait a minute, wait, 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 wait. The bookbag drives and carrying on are fucking annual. It's, this ha- this ain't nothing damn new, it happens every year. This time we just had it on a grander scale. Because we have businesses to come up, y'all bitch moan and complain about fifteen thousand dollars for backpacks, so, so, okay. So when they found somebody to do it and it didn't cost. So, so, okay, so when they found somebody to do it and it didn't cost the city no money. Now you complain that the focus is on the damn shit, what? That's not making damn sense anymore. That's not making sense. Tell me what we want, huh? Tell me, because one of the things I do not want this to become. Is a lot of you pushing back because you, either. You, you are hearing, folks are telling you, you are wrong, or. You are hearing that what you have to say doesn't mean anything, okay? And what I, my pushback to all of you has been, has been make it make sense. And stop giving us pieces of an idea that you had, you only got a piece of information and created this whole narrative. And then, with the narrative get just debunked or whatever, then y'all say, oh, they lying because you still wanna stick to your fucking narrative. Make it make sense, if all of us are supposed to be in this together. Then damn it, come to the table with something other than this goddamn foolishness. Come to the table and stop being so fucking accusatory, Ms. Godfrey. You know you are one who gets up there, I told you when I met you face to face, what did I tell you? When we sat down there at Leon White, I told you to your face, I said, sister. I got to get to know you because you neck roll when you come up there, I said, and I neck rolled you, cause every time I hear your name, honey. It, I cringe because I don't know what you about to do. I told you that to your face, in front of your husband, okay? So, Miss Thing, no, y'all need to come up off this goddamn foolishness and stop developing shit. Because you know, overanalyze and got real critical. Ask the damn questions that you want the answers to, okay? Y'all trying to do all this elaborate research and carrying on, then y'all trying to put folks in trick bags and carrying on. And if the trick bag is there, then you wanna, oh, well, you need to do your adequate research, well, I'm gonna put this on you. Because if you got all this fucking research, how come you ain't sitting on the committee some damn where? How come you are not at body, and, and when they ask for community input, how come you're not there, how come? This same research that y'all like to wait to shock the world with, how come nobody is going to the city manager, but like, listen, are you aware of this? How come nobody's going to your representative, how, y'all know the people that's on the boards? Y'all know, y'all representative have appointed certain people to all these different boards. How come you didn't go to the board appointee, and like, let me pull your coat tether something, this may be something you wanna look at before you make a decision. Y'all ain't doing that. Y'all not doing that. Y'all trying to have this gotcha shit. And then wanna say somebody, somebody isn't, everybody is human up in this thing, nobody's a robot, and even computers fail. Look at the internet, child, okay, you can't trust everything that you see on there, cause you got to what? Resource the source, you gotta understand your sourcing, right? You gotta research the source. And checking and double checking and carrying on, if y'all got all this goddamn time. To do all this fact checking that y'all trying to do, now how come it's not, it's, it's not being benefiting the city? Instead of having this gotcha shit. Cause a lot of this, this whole recall is really unnecessary. It really is, y'all could take the same information as, instead of being mad about it. And trying to say, oh, you fucked this up and you did the, you did it wrong, how come y'all ain't say, you know what, let's look at this information right here? Have you considered this? Have you considered this, huh? I, I said, I put the pictures up that, uh, Mike Lindsay went down to Florida. And looked at a, a few other properties that Next Day has done, that's in residential areas. And you know what I was told? Oh, no, honey, no, he, he, he don't know what he doing. He don't know what he doing. How you gonna take a cabinetry man, honey, somebody who builds cabinets? And send him down there to do this kind of job, he don't know what to look for. He, I know about all of that, and, and they, that, and then giving me all these, uh, fucked up ass statistics that meant nothing to me. Okay, that's what we got instead. Okay, that's what I got instead. But no, y'all, 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 y'all are becoming evil. You're becoming evil, you're becoming maniacal, you're becoming very, 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 very deceptive. Very deceptive, very, 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 very deceptive. Okay, very deceptive, all in the name of what? In the name of what? See, it's one thing to pull a cute stunt, see, the, the cute, let me tell you how sissy would do this, okay? Cause y'all trying to pull sissy stunts that don't know what you're doing. See, instead of having a gotcha, okay, the stunt becomes, listen, let me have the research. And then what we're gonna do is I'm going to present this here, okay, I'm gonna have you do with, what you do with it, okay? Then you come and get on the committee so you can sit up there and say, ah, I know you needed me, okay? Instead of trying to act like you are the most intelligent thing in the world, okay? It becomes, let me help out and let me see how I can get in on this, okay? Since all of y'all wanna sit down and, 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 and start the la, not this past meeting, the last meeting, honey, everybody came up there with these little shirts on. I am not being paid to wear this shirt, I am not on anybody's payroll, I have not accepted any money. To be a part of United, uh, College Park, I said, okay, so that's the theme today. Okay, that's the theme, and y'all want folks to know that y'all are volunteering your time and carrying on. Because of what the rumors are about that, there's rumors going around. That, okay, y'all must be getting paid because the way y'all handling this and carrying on, somebody doing something. And you don't like it, do you? You don't like the rumors, do you? So now y'all coming up with this whole big old plan, and then it seems like, and I'm gonna tell you what it, it just seems coerced. It just seemed like it's coerced, why are we having to deal with stunts and shows if all of us are saying we want the same fucking thing? Huh? Make it make sense. Make it make damn sense. All these stupid ass tactics. Right fight, wrong fucking tactics, if you saying that we all supposed to be one city. Okay? Where are the tactics to unify us, huh? And we all know to get the, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me, let me back that up, because I said this the other day. Because y'all talking about the festivals are carrying on. But we had a black business expo right there in Ward, when I said that in the car chronicle, where the fuck were y'all at? Y'all weren't even out there to support the black businesses. You weren't even out there to support, and it was right there in your ward, in Ward One, huh? You didn't even come out. So what are we doing? What are we saying? What is it that we want to unite, huh? Are we only uniting in politics because y'all wanna talk about tax dollars? Huh, is that the only way we're trying to unite, how much tax dollars are being spent? When you constantly say it's more than that, it's about community, huh? Please, somebody tell me, how, how are we gonna make this make sense up in here? And then let me go back, how y'all gonna call out mayor for being wrong for trying to adjourn that meeting? And did not let Tracy Arnold come back from the bathroom. She was wrong, dead wrong, but I ain't heard none of y'all call her out yet. Cause y'all keep wanting to treat her like, like she shit ice cream, and her butter don't melt on the pancakes, honey, okay? Y'all treat her that way. But y'all know she was wrong as hell for that. Y'all know she was wrong as hell for that. That was wrong, out of order, and then she got up and walked out, and it's, oh, I'm done. Uh-huh. Okay. Okay. Well, they're trying to smear the Grandville Law Firm name, uh, it's just low down, okay, you know what, it is low down, it is low down. It is low down, and that there, you know what, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not having it, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to. Allow that to do anything with, I'm not going to stand for that, that is completely unacceptable. Because if anybody else's business here, Jake gave out the ice cream, I said nothing about Jake's ice cream place, did I? I didn't sit down there and, and, and smear his name and say, oh, this, that and the other, I just said they pulled a damn stunt. They pulled a stunt, and they went to tactics. Tactics that had nothing to do with nothing, y'all bought pizza and ice cream and gave it to them people, and they wanted to use their little plight. To come over and to push your agenda and your narrative. Okay, that we need to keep the Bill Evans field, why are we reducing ourselves to such tactics? When you could have just asked them, hey, we gotta rally about saving the park. Cause y'all come out, cause y'all use, y'all closest to it, y'all probably use it the most, for them to tell you, we don't even go over there. What is that? I'm just trying to make it make sense, y'all. I'm really trying to make it make sense. So, that's what I got right now. And, uh, I'm going to end like I started, Gary Sustick, you got one more motherfucking time. To disrespect me on print or anything. And I swear to God, you will see a side of me that you're not gonna like. Okay, you're not going to like that, cause I don't know you, sir. But you got one more time to call me a bitch ass, or that I'm Jamil McKenzie's bitch, you got one more motherfucking time. And I'll leave it at that, until the next time, children, honey, we good, I'll talk to y'all soon, peace.